All right, gang, are we ready? We'll call the school committee meeting of February 26, 2025 to order. Superintendent Gray, would you call the roll?
Michelle.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Marie.
Here.
Randy.
Here.
Marty.
Here.
John.
Here.
Megan.
Here.
Chad.
Here.
Jeremy.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adjustments to the agenda, there is only one, and that's that I would put the pledge before that in the future, but I don't catch that. And that takes me to item E, approval of last meeting's minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That is unanimous. And that takes me to the consent agenda. I'll read through this and then look for a motion in a second. We have nominations. Elizabeth Coleman for JFK, BPS, BIS, BMS, and SRO. That's very good news. Appointments, Jennifer Russell, PHS Ed Tech One, Carter Markey, BIS Ed Tech Two, Emma Byers, COT MS, Clinical Lab Instructor Assistant. And resignations, Bradshaw Collison, Tara DeVizzenzo, and Jennifer Russell.
So moved.
Second.
And it's moved by John and seconded by Marie. Any discussion? His dad names.
Me?
Yeah, sorry, Lisa.
I thought you said Chad, and I'm like, he's over there. Okay. I'm just curious, like, the SRO is for all those schools. We don't have one at the high school, or she can't... Is it a she? Yeah, Elizabeth.
So, in my superintendent's report, technically, that's not our position. I wanted it on there because it was more about the excitement of actually having the second...
I know.
...SRO. That we have been, Scott, three years without an SRO at the middle school? Yeah. That we, just based off the police force of not being able to have somebody available to us, and pretty excited that Liz can come back to us and have that other presence on that side of town, the police department's at a point where they can staff that position, so...
So they'll, she'll bounce everywhere but here?
Correct.
All right.
We have, we have an SRO here.
Still?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Good. Other questions, thoughts, or discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Sorry, and that's unanimous, and I give those thoughts about Liz. She's amazing, and that's great news, and continuing investments in our police department are paying off, and that's really, really good. Good segue to the superintendent's report.
So the first item was just talking about the SRO piece, that Liz is returning as school resource officer to serve our students on that side of town. That gives us a presence there. And it's not just about an added layer of security. It's also about fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement, supports conflict resolutions, and reinforces that culture of respect that's there. This is just, this is a positive for us, and we've, like Scott just said, we've been a long time to have the ability to staff this position, so we feel really good about that. I want to say congratulations to the Biddeford Marching Band, who was invited to the Maine State Senate by Senator Henry Ingersoll, to receive a legislative sentiment for winning the New England School Band Association Division One Championship. Just an exciting day for them there. We have a first that will be happening on Saturday for Biddeford, the first time that our girls program will be competing for a state championship in Class B basketball. That game is Saturday, 1:00 p.m. at the Cross Center, not the Expo, at the Cross Center. And you do have to purchase tickets either online, or they do have the QR code if you walk in and you want to purchase them there. I did find out that you really can purchase them there, too, which was nice. But just an exciting, great tournament by our girls. They represented our community very, very well throughout the tournament, not just by winning, but just their, the way they carried themselves on the court was great to see that, and thank you to Coach, families, everybody who was able to support the girls throughout the season. March 5th, we'll be hosting our district-wide art show from 4:00 to 7:00 at the middle school. We encourage people to attend. We have a marching arts home show, which will take place on Sunday, March 16th, at 1:00 p.m. in Tiger Gym. Our BHS band performs at 2:20, 2:35, and 3:50. It is open to the public. Tickets will be sold at the door for that event. The Drama Club has a performance on Thursday, March 20th, at 7:00 p.m., Friday, the 21st, at 7:00 p.m., and Saturday, March 22nd, at 2:00 and at 7:00 at the BMS Performing Arts Center. Today, Marty and I spent our entire day in Augusta, testifying on bills such as starting pay for educators, homelessness, our economic disadvantage counts, special education. Real productive day, I think, overall, just to interact with legislators and to understand that while testimony happens on one day, the real important day is on the workshop days, where you can provide more suggestions and ideas of how to fund things. I do think that, you know, as a state, we know that there are costs that are rising, and that you just can't get everything that you ask for, but we also have to provide some solutions of where some of the things can come from, and how we advocate for our students, our community, in those places. So felt pretty good about today, because while you see a lot of nodding of the heads yes in an agreement, then it does come down to the financial aspects, and I felt like there was definitely some thought about, well, maybe you can't get everything you ask for today, but maybe there's a ramp up that might be able to allow that to happen. So I think a very productive day for us.
Questions or thoughts for Jeremy? Great, thank you, Jeremy. That was indeed a long, but I think productive day, and you put so much effort into that personally with all of the events and everything, and also the team here with, together with Chris Endorf, and I know the Sanford Superintendent, Matt Nelson, just so much effort into that. So, thank you, and it takes that kind of table setting, I think, to really make change in Augusta. So, good work. We're just getting started, but I think it will ultimately pay off. That brings us to committee reports, finance, buildings and grounds. Randy?
Yep. Finance committee will be meeting Monday to go over the budget in detail, so we'll keep you posted.
Okay, it'll be a big job. Thanks for doing that. And Michelle, on policy?
Nothing new to report, but I do want to thank Chris and Mandy for putting together this summary of policy committee meeting that you see on the agenda. I had mentioned last time that we were, we had talked in the meeting about having something like that, just so that the members could see what we had discussed and why we might be looking at certain policies. So, thank you to both of them for doing that.
Yeah, indeed, well said. That's very, very helpful. Any other committee updates or reports that we want to get to? Okay. So, go ahead, Chad, thank you.
I just have a quick question on the memo. There seems to be a date discrepancy specifically regarding the header of February 13th. I believe that's the date it's referencing the meeting, and then the first paragraph talks about an October 9th meeting? Okay, thank you.
Good catch. Lisa?
Yeah, could we have, I've asked a couple of times, but the SMAC committee added to this committee report, so I know they don't meet often, but at least we can have an update when they do. Thank you.
Okay, noted. Anything else on the world of committees? Sometimes I don't always catch them as well as I could. Marie?
Just looking to have the evaluation committee have some time in executive session to review the process that we went through this past year, just to look at places where we might want to fine tune. So, we need some time in executive session to be able to do that. So if we can get some of that moving forward, not too far beyond March would be nice, while it's fresh in everyone's minds. Thank you.
Yeah, good suggestion. We'll look to do that in a future agenda. Very good. Okay, old business, I don't believe there is any, and new business, we have a couple updates, a very big one, starting with Jeremy. Do you want to take us through item A there as we kick off budget season?
Okay, we are in kickoff mode. This is pre-game, okay? So...
All right.
So, you have two things in your agenda. One is the budget that has every single item in it, that finance committee has that. If you want that one, you're welcome to. It's also there for you in a PDF, because sometimes I like the PDF, because you can, you know, once you download it, then you can search it a little bit easier by keywords. But as we've started the budget, and we've talked a lot about subsidy, valuation, those pieces, now as it starts to come together, we have to learn about what some of those impacts are for us, and what it will mean to our community, and probably some big decisions that we'll need to make throughout this process. As you know, and we've talked about, while our subsidy did decrease, we also had a big expenditure, and a lot of that is around the middle school bond. But at the end of the day, the biggest piece that drives our budget is the fact that we had over $500 million, $508 million in valuation growth. And so, when you look at the second chart at the bottom of the page, we'll be able to, on the second page, we'll be able to go through what that valuation has done over time, and why it puts us in the position that we're at. We did receive 192 more in vocational subsidy, and about $160,000 in overall subsidy while you, when you take that bond payment out. But the big piece that comes with all of this is that when your valuation increases, and you multiply it by the mill rate, and you look at your operating allocations, you have something that's called required local. And required local is they, the state says, you must raise this amount of money in order to get this amount of money. And in this situation, our required local is up by $1.4 million. They're saying, you must raise $1.4 million more in order to get the $13 million that we're going to send you for pre-K through 12 education. When you start to look at the next chart on things, this is where you can really see over time the great changes that we've had since 2014, 15 in valuation. In 2014, 2015, you had just come off the fact that Merck had closed, and the valuation of your city was going down. In that downward timeframe, you were receiving a great deal more in state subsidy, because valuation is tied to subsidy. And then you can see incremental, 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 and then 2021 comes, and you had a $79 million increase. And remember, these are off three-year averages, okay? So they're taking the three-year average of your municipal valuation, and you can see where we are the last three years. Major increases, 212, 318 million, 508, and as we already can project forward towards next year, the increase in valuation is for, for three-year average is $489,000, which, while that is high, the good news in that scenario is that's actually a little bit less than what the state average increases. So that kind of doesn't put you in a negative situation going in. In that scenario, I think the real reason that you see this is larger municipalities and in the southern part of the state, obviously, those prices rose quicker than the rest of the state. Everyone else is just playing catch-up. And so, we start with this situation of having less subsidy than last year, having some lower payments. Then, we know that we are in the transition of closing JFK, which there are some real savings in that for us, and some of those are in this first round of the budget. And there are some proposed staffing adjustments that I have in there that I'll be recommending to you, and I would like to read through those. One is we were never able to fill the Director of Guidance position, even though it's in the budget, and right now I have that off the table. Yeah. We have a one-year position for a nurse at JFK, and I'm recommending to replace that with an LPN once we're a combined school, so that there would be a nurse and an LPM at Biddeford Primary School, because you're going to be close to 650, 700 kiddos there. Probably going to need that coverage, also with some of our younger kiddos, where you have registrations, vaccinations, those first years, you're doing a lot of health paperwork on kids as they enter your system. We had a one-year kindergarten position. We had a one-year secretary position. We had a one-year kindergarten position, we had a one-year secretary position. We have an educational technician at BPS that I would be looking to eliminate based off what we need now to have planning time and having five planning sessions, which matches the contract versus six. We have offsetting additions that you have, you need to increase the STEM position to full-time, so that you could have those five different UAs. And we also would look at needing to have a special education secretary full-time in that building. You know that you have an offset of $905,000 that came out of the budget for the state funding project. So, when you look at all of those other reductions, including that, you're looking at about $1.2 million in reductions. When you look at proposed increases, you have salary and step increases for all staff, which has an increase of about $1.4 million. Health insurance is figured at 10%, $572,000. Dental insurance at $6,000. Paid family medical leave tax is $148,000, the 1% tax. We're hopefully going to be able to avoid that by going with a private carrier, which would delay that payment for up to 13 months. So, that could be something that, if the city and the school has to go together on that, city's working on that piece, there could be $150,000 worth of savings. We have some additional staff in the budget, an EL teacher that is needed, two EL educational technicians. Yep?
So, I'm, you know, when you said get rid of the one-year kindergarten position and the ed tech at BPS, I got concerned, because when I was there, you know, I noticed the classroom sizes are huge there, and I worried about eliminating an ed tech. So, when you're talking about this ELL teacher and this ELL ed tech, like what building are you talking about for that?
It would be based off the population at that time. That's a population that tends to shift a lot.
Right.
And so, we would-
So, not necessarily BPS?
Could be at BPS, I think that's, off the top of my head, I think that's a pretty high one, and I believe the teacher, I don't want to misspeak, but based off our ratios, needing more staff, and that's what it came out to be throughout the district. Where it's at right now, Megan, I can't, I wouldn't want to say with accuracy. But the ed tech position at the elementary level is for one of the UAs that we use. We have six right now, we'd be going to five.
It's just mind-boggling that you have like, yeah, okay, I'm going to be-
Wait till the end, because there's a, there's a lot of different things here, and again, as school committee members, you will, and city council, you'll have to make some tough decisions this time around. In our budget, we also have a large amount of money for technology, infrastructure, refreshes of Chromebooks at BIS, Middle School Center of Technology. Educational programs and supplies. We have reading program, math program updates, those are based off three-year payments, so you would have that for three years. New training to go with those programs. Instructional supplies district-wide, when you think of your whole district, only a $70,000 increase, and half of that is just cost going up, things cost more. We have $130,000 for out-of-district placements, $55,000 for special education equipment, and $91,000 for increase in psych services, OT and speech. And facilities and repair, we have custodial repairs, go ahead, Marie.
How many students is that for out-of-district placements?
That would be about two students.
Thank you.
Some of those were move-ins that occurred throughout the year. Custodial repairs and supplies, you've got a combined $23,000 there. Looking at grounds and mowing, I have a number of $40,000 in the budget, and we'll be talking about APC lease of moving to the church, which is an extra $12,000. It gives us some ability to have more space and probably tuition some kids into the program as a possibility. We received three new bus leases, which you have to pay the first year on, $72,000, and then you get the state funding starts a year after, and then when you're done payment, you still get state funding for a year. When you look at a tetna, a net increase of $3.4 million and a reduction of 1.2 is, is kind of where this plays out at. We also have capital reserves in the budget, 215,000 capital reserves coming out of fund balance, an estimated 200,000 from SMAC revenue. We have debt service and an offset. So, one of the things that we have in there is you have a situation where because the loan payment on the middle school goes away, you also had a local share, okay? You had a local share payment. I've kept that in there while you also are paying the first interest payment on the new building at BPS. That's about $360,000. The reason I'm keeping the $229,000 in there on a local payment is because if you eliminate that, the following year, your Bedford Primary School first year full payment goes up to like 800,000. So, I'm not trying to, trying not to create a false hole that you will fall into with taking something away, knowing that it's going to go back up. The next steps that you'll have in the budget piece will be refine the budget, talk to principals, confirm what we would do for pre-K space, as we talked about in the last meeting. We know the building won't be ready until December, and you'll need to make some decisions of whether we close down JFK at the beginning of the year, maybe lease some space, maybe look at some space around the district. Problem is, if the boiler goes in October and you're there until December, you're making a fix on something that you're not going to be in much later. There's four classrooms of space that we would need to find. Further examination of closing, closing costs, there are still some things that we need to work out with the city of, you can't just like move out and turn everything off, it's still there, it's still a building. You've got some security things, you've got some elevators, you, whether you want to heat it or not, that, you've got insurance on the property, how's the driveway going to be plowed, how much electricity is going to be left on, who's going to pay for those things? That needs to be done. We need to review the plowing contracts if that building is to fully clove, close, also looking at the heating contract with Honeywell, because that's the biggest driver and probably all of our heating is the repairs that happen there, and figuring out what that deduction of taking that building offline would be. And then also like the utilities aspect of heating oil, electricity, those types of things for that building. You need to understand the impact, the assessment of staffing reductions on student services. Talk about the long-term strategy of debt service management and capital spending around that, this kind of transition year, and you're going to have a lot of, you know, opportunity to weigh in on this. Now let's talk about what we have proposed to you for the budget committee to you and how this impacts things. So, what is here today is an expenditure increase of 5.4%. And in thinking about inflation and other things, you would actually probably be somewhat reasonable of the starting place of 5.4% on something. However, because of the required local that we have to raise in this piece, the net impact on the budget for local taxpayers is $3.1 million, or 11.58%. So, it's double what your expenditure increase is. That's the hard part in this, is that we're trying to be, you know, what we're presenting here has some pain in it already, and you're still at 5% of expenditures. But because of the funding formula and what we've been talking about over years on valuation, you have a much higher local impact in this scenario. I mean, in essence, you guys are kind of closing a school to get to this point, and it's still having a major impact. And so, you're going to have, we're going to have to have some decisions back like we did, Lisa was around at that time, John was on the city council, where, you know, you may have to say, hey, what does X amount look like? And this is the work that we're going to need to do as a committee and city council as we dive into those things. At the end of the day, we all know that 90-plus percent of our budget is salary benefits and debt service payment on the high school. 10% or less is everything else. And we will show those pieces during the graphs and everything that come up during the next presentation, but we'll have to make some tough decisions about what we want. Happy to take any questions.
Questions or thoughts on the budget side of things for Jeremy? Chad and then John.
Not necessarily a quick question, just trying to get my head wrapped around the overall process here. Can you speak to what guidance was flowed down to the individual schools as far as how they went about preparing their individual budgets and what efficiencies they were asked to consider or highlight? That's the first part of the question, and the second part would be, if there are those tough decisions, have you pushed back or, or had the conversations with the individual schools on, hey, if, if you need to cut your budget by 3, 5, 10%, where would you all pull it from? Have those conversations happened?
So, I've asked those, asked the first, answered the first question. We didn't, the directions were, other than staff increases, supplies and other things need to be about the same. Number one, because we knew going into this, but the problem is that amount of money is so small in the grand scheme of the budget. The next piece is, yes, begin to be thinking about what you would have to do, but that needs to be, if we're in that scenario, that needs to be not just what you would do at one school and what you'd do at another school and what someone picking, you need to have a uniform approach of what you're going to do as a district, because, an example, and I, I'll just, you wouldn't cut Project X at one school to leave Project Y here, that is the same thing, and then have it cut again at a different level. And I don't want to call out any particular program, but, you know, if we were building tables at one, one school and that was something that the district valued, you want that to go out through, you're going to have to make systems-level decisions if we're looking to lower this, and you say, hey, this is the decision the system's making to try to keep it across the board as possible.
What happens if we don't do the local allocation, what they tell us we need to do? How much do we lose? How is that, what's the percentage of how it goes down if we don't manage that?
Dollar for dollar.
Dollar for dollar. Okay. And then, maybe you could find out when some of these other TIFs are going to expire and all that's going to hit back into the valuation, like Bedford Crossing sign, a TIF for downtown, and I don't know if we can find some other ways with all these new housing projects going to create another TIF district for multifamily housing or whatever we want to call it, to try to shelter some of this, because it's just going to keep hitting this, and we're, if, if Saco's getting more money than we are, something is definitely out of whack here. And, you know, we're, what are we at, 37%?
We're at 37%, Saco's a 50% receiver.
Yeah, so-
Their valuation is-
So, when we start looking at some of that and some of the other communities around us, where we're such a low receivership, we need to figure out a way to shelter some of these other, other revenues. I don't know how fast we can do it.
John, it's the same conversation that I had in Augusta today. School department with 8% free and reduced lunch, the highest income, medium income in the state of Maine, and a 50% receiver, and because they spend more money, they get $4,200 per kid of subsidy for spec, per student based off special education, where we're at 28.
Yeah, I mean, it, the-
It makes no sense.
No sense.
The rich get richer.
No, no sense, no sense whatsoever. If you look at the, the community where, in the chart you put up before of how, how poor the community is, and now we're going to try to increase their taxes by, by so, so much, it's, it's going to be, be very interesting. I got, get into this book.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, John. Yeah, we are, sometimes people, you know, can be feeling about TIFs, which shelter valuation increases as, as a mechanism that we don't want to look at, but they were very helpful in this case, and we are indeed in talks to extend the 111 Bedford Crossing one right now, so your comment is well-made, and including in downtown, because we will continue to see valuation growth. We have also been very, we've complied with revaluation requirements at this state level, which I think will ultimately benefit us, but it's hurting us now. Looking at Saco, I think they did a revale a couple of years ago, so now the way this looks back, it's going to catch them next year, where we stayed up to date with our reevaluation, so we'll see a smoother, but very unfortunate trend. I do, I mean, this is a really tough three or four years, it's going to be hard on the council side as well, and I, we're going to have to really look at places that we can scrimp it safe. I completely agree.
And TIFs are good, credit enhancements are bad.
Words of wisdom. I think, I think it's all a balance, we're seeing good economic growth and, you know, we have almost 500 new apartments hitting the market right now, which I think you're seeing some of that stuff pay off, and, you know, one and two months free, and you're going to see cost of housing level off because of the investments that we're making, so I think there is a light at the end of the tunnel, but this is another year that's going to be hard. Lisa?
Yeah, we're talking about the same thing every year, it just seems to get to the point where it never changes and we just keep talking about it, but I don't know what we can do. Anyway, this, we're going to, this is the early stage where, and I'm going to be with you on Monday, and we're going to talk a long time. I just wanted to know, when you mentioned the nurse at the Kennedy, and hopefully transferring that to an LPN and helping out at BPS because of the increase in students, how many students are there? Just curious, do you have it off the top of your head? Once, they're, they're all there around?
680 something.
Yeah, that's what I was figuring, so-
But some of it depends on what we do with pre-K, long, longer term.
Right, long-term. And how many at the high school?
I've got about 900, and we have two nurses here.
That's what, yeah, and, and the, because that was my question, I know I talked about that forever, that we need two nurses here.
Plus, plus the vocational center.
Yeah, we have to have two nurses here.
And you do have two?
Yep.
Okay, that was my question, that's, that's good news then, because I was going to say, is, and they're both nurses, right?
They are here, because, you know, again, 900 students-
It's a lot of students.
300 over there. And again, different age levels have different needs.
Yeah, oh, for sure.
You know, high schools, one set of needs, and a lot of, a lot of like the younger kiddos, I mean, obviously there's, there's needs there, but just new registration paperwork is so tight.
It takes a little, yeah.
And I, I don't think that, I don't think that one nurse in that building can manage that, knowing that, I think that this can be a solution, you know, again, the committee at their wishes could say, yeah, we have two nurses, but we have to understand that there's a financial difference in those.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, I'm not going to, I have other questions, but I'll see you on Monday, so I'm not going to bore everybody else with-
Well, that's a good segue. What's most helpful to you at this point, Jeremy? Would it be helpful if a committee member said, you know, I'd love to see in a scenario where you cut 400,000 from this and see how that looks, or what, take us through what helps kind of you manage this process and present us with options?
So, first, first, this needs to go through the finance committee for them to give, give direction to the superintendent on what to present, because the finance committee could say, hey, Jeremy, show me what it looks like with not taking any of that stuff out. Well, we know what direction that goes. My job is to present something to the finance committee that I think is reasonable on the first draft, knowing all of the, and this is way out of my comfort range for what I would want to see. Like this is, this is challenging. Marty, what I think we need to do, uh, at some point, which we haven't done for a long time here, is once we present to the city council, which is Tuesday, the eighteenth.
March eighteenth, yep.
Eighteenth. Is certainly they're gonna have a reaction to this piece. I sent you guys all a memo several weeks ago, council's received that. I've asked Brian to share this memo with them, um, so that they're up to date on what's gonna happen. And I think it may be, uh, it may be decent for both groups to get together in a workshop format to say, hey, we've gotta give our school leader and our city manager some direction because, you know, everybody, nobody wants increases in taxes, right? Like, we can all agree that nobody really wants that. But people need to know that if there is a direction given and you're saying, take this amount of money, that it's not paper and pencils, can't get you there. It's, it's, it's the big things and you have to be prepared for what those are and there will be consequences to that. And so I think that's a good process, um, because the city's got tons of strains too. With rising valuation, revenue sharing goes in the other direction. You know? Those things occur. They've, the, the city's had trouble hiring police officers and firefighters and being competitive there. And then I've showed you all our spending compared to other York County schools. That's reality. So it becomes, uh, you know, what are you doing just to hold on? And, you know, based off the other schools, we only got one spot to go to be at the bottom. We desperately need these two bills to pass because they are designed in a way to support a vulnerable population, which will help things for the future, but it's not gonna help for now.
Yeah, that's a good, a good suggestion about the joint workshop. Uh, let's work together, we'll get that set up if the committee's open to that. Joint workshop with the city council, budget workshop, yep, good. Further thoughts, comments? Um, finance committee meeting Monday and, um, kinda building from there? Anything else you wanna add on that one, Jeremy? Or just the process from here?
I think that's, that, that's the kickoff.
Okay.
That's kickoff. You've known me long enough that when we're talking about money, I'm not gonna be on the uplifting side of that. You know? But I think, but I also want to, you know, everybody here also needs, we're only talking local funding here. There's a whole lot going on in our environment around federal funding. Okay? I want you guys to understand, over one million dollars worth of title funding, that's not even sitting here. That's reading assistance for kids, lower class sizes. Seven hundred thousand dollars in federal funding for special education. Ninety thousand dollars Paulette for Perkins-ish? Little over a hundred for vocational funding. Let's pretend that goes away. We're having a much different conversation than just the eleven percent. We're talking about, like, okay, kids don't get reading support. We need to pay attention to that piece as well. And I am much more optimistic on that front because I believe that our federal officials do have to come back home and talk to their constituents. And if every school's losing a ton of money, I'm not sure that's gonna make everybody happy because there's services that are lost and probably go back onto the taxpayer locally. And so there's a lot going on and a lot of moving parts on this piece. And, you know, the, the piece that, I hate this budget of where we're at because it means that, as Mark Lussard always used to ask me, can you look into your crystal ball and tell us what's coming? And we've been talking about the valuation thing every single year. Everyone laughs like, oh, he said the word valuation again, you know? Because it's, it's the piece, it's, 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 it's just that simple.
Marie?
What's the reality of communities and their representatives in Augusta? Voting for something where they're on the low end but receiving high subsidy? How are we gonna get those people to change their mind? Because I can't see those people wanting to give away their shiny new car.
So today, we tiptoe around that a lot. But let's be, let's be realistic in the fact that, so two of my three days this week have been both sitting in legislature during sessions. And the first one was about the, uh, study on EPS. And what's really, really interesting, and I'll send you guys the link and, you know, if you're interested, I'll walk you through it. Since two thousand one, okay, to now, we have lost nineteen percent of the students in the state of Maine, statewide. Okay, so that number's going like this. And then, as you're familiar with the eleven lines that we vote on and talk about, they broke down each of those eleven lines in spending based off inflation and where we're at. And there's just places where here's the inflation line and here's the spending line statewide. One of the majors being special education. You know, transportation's a big one, but that, we've seen, we know why some of those things are. Regular classroom instruction, which is regular education, is almost exactly on the curve for inflation. And so there was some conversation around this piece or, about, well, when is this ever gonna come together? Like, and if we continue to just study things and talk about it, it's never going to come together. You can't lose twenty percent of the students over the state of Maine and continue to do the same thing. And I had a conversation with one of the reps today to say, you mentioned that. When has there been a committee forum to say, provide us five or six options so that we can talk about what could be some possible solutions? We never get to that point. Just like going today and asking for more funding here, something's gotta give somewhere. But we never get to talk about that. What's gonna look different, uh, about that? You know, one of the craziest pieces that you would see, and I haven't yet had a chance to talk to Paulette about it, but vocational funding kinda dropped. And that's the one thing that everybody's kind of crying for. And so that's what I find very frustrating, Marie, is not, it's not just the spreadsheet. Because the spreadsheet tells the picture and nobody is gonna wanna vote for something that's gonna impact their local community. But if you don't talk about other ways of doing things and possible solutions as an entire state, we're gonna continue to get the same thing. More burden on the taxpayer because the money has to come from somewhere. And when you talk about it coming from the state level, that's still coming from us in a different way, shape or form. That's the reality.
Good, I'm glad we're on at least a long-term journey to shift the way it's worked on. And we, you know, I think we've done a good job making our case and built a lot of allies and support. I, I think, uh, everyone would agree, is one thing I wanna make sure to mention, uh, is, is thank all of you here in the audience for your leadership. You know, it's, uh, obviously, um, probably watching this discussion and you think, hey, don't, you know, don't forget how hard we work with what we have. So, uh, I wanna make sure you're hearing that.
And, and Marty, I wanna chime in just to go back, Chad, your piece like direction with, these guys have been with, with us, we've been together for a long time. And they come in with a budget the first draft. There's not one of them that has a wish list in that. You know, it's, it's, it's kinda getting to the point where, there used to be a day where the meetings were quite long. And now they just feel like I'm in a good mood when they come in and it's, because, you know, I look at Lindsay and I say, ah, there's nothing left. Your supply line didn't go up, you didn't ask for more in the office, we have furniture, you have all of those things. And Lindsay's like, you know, could I get a stipend for two thousand dollars so kids could have an act? That's pretty much what the conversations are nowadays. Scotty came in with nothing. Martha's already cut it before she's got there because she, they know the environment that we're in and they very much understand the process. And what's, they're really would like to be asking us for is this, 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 this and this. And there's, and they're, they know that that option may not be on the table because they knew from the communications that we have that this is a very tough situation. And so I'm, I'm really proud of the work that they do on, on the front end of it. Because we, I've been in situations before where you just come in and ask for all these things and you go through this exercise and no one's feeling really good about it. They're just very reasonable right from the get-go. Uh, and, you know, there's a whole list of things that they wish they could ask for that we sometimes don't get to. Um, and that's the challenging part. And thank you, Marty, for mentioning that because we've been doing it a long time with each other and they're really good at it.
You're here, thank you. Chad?
I, I need clarification on something. So it, it sounds like we've conceded as a community that it's out of our hands. And that's pretty much what I've been hearing over the last couple, couple meetings that city evaluation and payroll and whatnot have gotten to a place where we've cut out everything that needs to be cut, we've cut that, everything that we believe can be cut. So I guess, you know, I don't wanna claim defeat. I, I'd like to understand what our options are. And I guess from a community lobbyist standpoint, are we doing? And I, I didn't quite understand where you were going, um, regarding other towns having, um, or getting more, uh, more money. Is, is it because we're not lobbying correctly? Is it because we're not, like, so, so why is that happening? And, and is there something that we can exercise or something that we can do to try to? Granted, it's gotta come from somewhere, I understand that. But if we're not, if we're not fighting that fight, if we don't have someone actively pursuing that money, are we doing ourselves and our community a disservice?
It's a good question. I mean, it's, uh, it, it is purely that, it's kinda this good news, bad news story where we are seeing great valuation growth. So the total value of properties across the entire city of Bitterford, I think, is now, uh, right around four billion, is that right, Jeremy? It's, it's, so it's, it's just grown so much as we've seen, you know, demand and, you know, the bidassance and so forth. And I think we surpassed York, I believe, so, which was previously the top.
Yeah, we're like the, we're like the third most valuable community in York County now. It's, I, I, I joke with John, uh, from time to time, but back when I first, uh, came here, there was a gentleman named Mr. Peker, um, that would come to meetings. And I know that before that, uh, time, uh, there was some work done about like Bitterford Pool being on their own and separate. And knowing what we know today about property valuations, might've been the best thing that ever hap, what could've happened on a school, school funding only. And I'm only saying that just off the cusp about school funding. I think Chad, you know, to answer your question, it's exactly what we were doing today and about exactly looking at the, at the bills that, that we put forward. And, you know, some of the work that, whether it be from the session that we had with legislators this fall to kinda set the table for that. Get, the funding formula in twenty years has not changed significantly. And they've studied and they've done this. And then it comes down to the spreadsheet and no one votes for it. And it's about looking, um, within that formula of seeing what are the things that could impact communities like ours the most? And again, one of the bigger pieces would be it's student count and valuation and there needs to be a third leg to that stool. And I've always, you know, contended that that should be medium income adjusted by regional index as part of that. But to get any movement on that is challenging. And then to think about nineteen percent of the students, you know, if you're a school, I mean, there are two schools in Purnell, Scott County that used to be two Class A high schools side by side. And they're a couple of miles apart and now they're Class D's high schools and they're still in existence. That also has an impact on here because that money's spread everywhere. And so there are some of those things that we have done, you know? I, I think everyone kinda laughs today when I'm up there and I'm saying superintendent of schools, Bitterford, Saco and Dayton, they got the same vest on, they feel like a NASCAR driver if we had any more, you know, with all the patches. Like, we've really tried to do everything that we've, we tried to do and lobby on that. We need more of it. We need that voice to be out there all the time about what are the things that we stand for and what are the things that are wrong? And, you know, today, it's about sixty-four percent of our students live in poverty and that's a whole different makeup of a classroom than a classroom that's got one child or that.
Right, but the point is, like, cause I've been listening to you for three years. And so the way that I understand it is that the evaluation of the houses in Bitterford is so high. It's the tale of two Bitterfords, right? Like, when houses sell, the evaluation is so high that we look like a very affluent community. But what's not in the formula is this, the poverty rate that's actually present in our classrooms. Like the free and reduced lunch rate and like what, you know, our renters are going, like the gentrification piece, right? And so we have this high need in terms of our socioeconomics. But it doesn't show in the formula because our houses are selling for so much. So like the two numbers are lying to each other, but only one of them takes into account when we get our funding. And so we're in that weird dynamic that like maybe Saco isn't yet, but like Yarmouth is a truly affluent community. And so their numbers are like our numbers, but they don't have the, the poverty in the classrooms. And then, and then like, you know, a Massa B-Sic, their houses aren't selling the way ours are. Don't do that to me, Mr. Stevens. Uh, but our poverty rate might be the same. So like, that's why we're in this weird bubble. And so we are, that's why we're in this weird bubble. So it's not defeat because we have to keep asking for the formula to change, but we are stuck between what people are willing to buy a house for in Bitterford and then what that makes it look like we are on paper. Cause we're not the community we look like we are on paper in our classrooms. Is that what, is that the dummy version of what you try to say to us? Okay.
I mean, we are a service center community with high property value. I mean, and, and, you know, our best partner today in Augusta was Washington County Schools. Our partners were rural Maine schools because they are along the coast with high levels of property on oceanfront, uh, high levels of poverty on oceanfront. They're in the same boat, some of them. You're like, you take Jonesport Beals Maine, okay? It's down there. Eighty percent free and reduced lunch and they're minimum receivers. That's, that's the disparity in this.
That formula's flawed, so we're trying to make some progress. Marie?
Chad, where I was going was talking about the people in the legislature that come from communities where they don't have the poverty rates, the, the, you know, ELL rates, the free and reduced special ed rates that we have. But they also don't have the valuation and the beachfront property that we have, so they receive a higher percentage of subsidy. How do we get those people? How do we get those people to change their mind towards voting to make this much more fair and equitable? And looking at other determining factors like JR is fighting for. That's, you have to change the mindset of these people who are in a nice spot with not, you know, they don't have a high valuation and they, they get more subsidy. I mean, how do you get those people to change their vote? I mean, that's, that's where I was going with that earlier. Because it's going to take those people from those communities to help this along. It, it's, it's got to, it's going to come down to people really looking at beyond their nose, looking at what's best for all, all the kids of Maine.
You're here. Okay. Well, great discussion, committee. Um, more to come as we dig into that. Let's move on to, uh, item B. Happy, uh, good discussion here, it sounds like, proposed relocation of the APC program. Not clear, Jeremy, if you need a motion, but do you want to queue this up and just at least give us a, an update? It seems like a, a really good possibilities.
Yes. So, um, we've talked with Guy Gagnon a lot. Um, and as you know, we've been at, uh, I think it's the old rectory building. So that's what, what it was for several years. And then, as we know, uh, My Place Teen Center and the church has gone through a lot of renovations. Uh, and the basement is available for us. We've mentioned this before that there is a desire to move into that space, uh, which would be better for, for programming wise. And a desire from Maine Housing and Guy to move us into that space because it then allows three more apartments to hit the rolls in that building. The negative piece is about $12,000 more. Uh, yes, total. More space will allow us, um, to serve possibly more students and some students maybe from other tuitions that we probably would be able to cover that 12,000 difference. Guy and I are still talking about the utilities piece of it. Because there's really no, um, again, the, the church hasn't been open for a full year. So how much electricity and heat and everything that's new in there is, um, something that, you know, hasn't been mapped out yet. And he would like us to move sooner rather than later, uh, if this is approved. And he would hold our current price until the next fiscal year, even looking towards moving this spring, uh, if everything's, uh, ready to go. They want to get going on renovating the current space and turning those into, you know, what they're going to do between their couple of buildings to open those up to be apartments. Without a space, we certainly are at a loss. And so I propose this to you so that we can at least start moving forward.
Thoughts or comments from the committee? John.
So, um, first one is what's the square footage on the upper floor? Is it comparable or is one more than the other?
No, they're very comparable. They're on top, on top of the, the piece.
The upstairs is big though, isn't it?
Well, it's, it's the same footprint that you're sitting on, square foot, higher ceilings.
So, so that's why I'm, I'm, I'm getting at that, the, the heating cost.
Correct.
Be a lot more expensive to heat upstairs than it's going to be to hit downstairs. So I got a little issue with that piece of it. And then the lease term options, five or 10 years. I wouldn't do a 10-year lease. I'd do five and then maybe options. But, and is there a way out clause on this?
Yeah. I mean, if we, with anything that a school committee has, if they don't fund a program, you have the ability to get out of, out of that piece. And again, you're working with Maine, you're working with Bitterford Housing who has vested interest in us being there. We have an interest in being there because the program's been so successful. This allows for a little bit more hands-on space, uh, which is good. I don't know if how many of you during the opening got a chance to go downstairs, uh, in that space, but there's still, probably some of you went to church there, back where there's the big kind of auditorium space. Being able to preserve that, preserve that room behind that have shop space, woodworking space, boats, kayaks, whatever that piece, so that there's hands-on things. And then Apex was very generous in this piece and they had some HUD money that they were able to put towards these renovations, which helps keep us, keeps this rate low. And so with that piece, they're really hoping that, uh, and aim to have some real nighttime programming for kids in that same space after hours because the lease is paid. They're partners with us. They put some money into the renovations and they would like to program after hours for kids after the teen center closes.
After the teen center closes or after?
After My Place Teen Center closes. Their doors for the evening to be able to have something after that for kids.
Lisa.
Well, what do you mean by that? It wasn't one of my questions. So you mean that what would be open after hours?
The space, the space that we're in.
So who would be, who would be monitoring that? Staff there? Is that what you're saying?
Their staff.
Oh. Okay. Um, all right. So is this something that has to be decided before we go through this whole budget thing? I mean, I know it's time sensitive because Guy wants it done. But that, that's something I want to know if we need to make that decision because what we're looking at, again, it's how many students do we service there? You have 40? Wow, 40. Um, that's grown quite a bit. And when I think of our students qualifying to go there, my, always had a question. I always had a question about this with special ed. I mean, is it a life commitment? Like once they go, do they ever transition back to the high school at any point in time? Cause that would be the gold, right? Hopefully. When we started, I'm probably going to ask you questions that I asked you a long time ago when we started this whole thing, because I don't quite remember. Like who does all the cleaning and maintenance over there?
We do.
You have a custodian that goes over there and does that? So when you're looking at.
And sometimes Danielle's staff too. Sometimes Danielle's staff as well.
I figured that. That's what I was thinking what was happening. And is this 4,000, doesn't include the utilities? It doesn't include, um, there's a lot of things it doesn't include. And then the annual escalator, is that like it's going to go, it could go up every year, two to 3%?
Yep.
That we're going to have to, to absorb. I mean, I'm not, I, I'm a strong supporter of that program. I'm a strong supporter in getting kids back into the mainstream too. And I, I've been down there to visit it. I haven't been since she started, but I will. And, and I've seen a lot of good things happen there. And my, I guess what I would prefer to do, and I know, and it's just me, is to go down there and look at the difference space. You know what I mean? And if we have to make this decision tonight, I don't know if I'm prepared to do that if we're looking at the, the issues we're going to have with the budget. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I under- yeah, I know Guy's really, Guy really was pushing me on this piece because he wants to.
Of course he is. I mean, he has his own agenda too, and I get that. And I just can't imagine, like I need to see where it is and he's actually going to turn these into apartments. I can't even believe that, but that's going to happen, I guess, because Guy says so. But I, I would like, we always want to improve what we're doing and this would be an improvement to that program. And the opportunities, I get that.
Just, just such a better educational space than two floors. A building that's really designed to be apartments, not a school.
Yeah, I walked through it. It looked like there's a kitchen and there's a whatever. I, I know what it looks like, but I, I would like to go down and take a look at the two different spaces and get a better handle on it. And I really, and what Guy wants, he might have to wait. Like I would really be, be more comfortable approving a change and this increase after we've gone through the budget process myself. And then I, that's, we're looking at March and then it has to be voted on in June. I mean, I know that everything is a time sensitive issue all the time. Every time we have an issue like this, it's like, oh, we have to vote on it and it's time sensitive. It, it's not that if I said no, that I am saying no to APC or the programming there, I think it's great. But it's just that I think the costs are more than 12,000 in the end. It's going to keep adding up. You know what I mean? And 10-year lease is definitely something I, I wouldn't be comfortable with because, uh, we don't know what's going to happen. You know, maybe all kids will be back at the high school and we won't have to, to have this, uh, alternative pathways. I, I know you're smiling. That's probably not going to happen, right? You're like, yeah, that's funny, Lisa. I get it.
This is.
I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah. And I understand that piece. I, I think that this, the new space allows the opportunity to serve kids from other districts, which will offset that space.
Of course. And I thought that we would do that for a lot of things, but those things take time and they take transportation and they take a lot of things involved in getting kids there because a lot of schools don't have those programs to offer.
Correct.
I just want to jump in here briefly. And we have the APC director here, so maybe we want to hear from her. But, uh, just for the benefit of the committee, uh, you know, I can tell you that a $5 square foot rent is a remarkable deal. Stuff like this in Bitterford is going as much as 20 right now. If you saw something of 13, I would sign for it right away.
I'm not questioning that at all. I'm really not questioning the amount at all.
I would look super hard at it. I also, I think this committee is sitting here 10 years from now. So if you take a 3% a year increase, you're going to be at 672 in 2035. It'll probably be one of the very brightest spots in the budget. So I think that, that future committee would look at us and say we were geniuses. So I just, I want to add like a little bit of real estate perspective. Like this is a full-on incredible deal. Marie.
One of the second bullet, it talks about, uh, lease term options. It says five or 10. Do we have the option? And is there a price break if we go 10?
I haven't been able to have that conversation with Guy on that piece.
Would you like to go?
No.
An honest assessment, and, and I'm going to ask this with any potential budget change. Is this a need to have or is this a nice to have? From everything it sounds like, it sounds right now, it's a nice to have with some great future benefits that really right now are unquantifiable. And given everything that's going on and everything that's being asked of the community, I, I struggle to your point where we're being asked to do something because it's, it, it needs to be done today. That takes the decision out of our hands. And so I agree, it would be nice to better understand what we're looking at here and understand the impacts.
I, I want to answer that question. No, this is a need to have. Because if Guy pulls the lease from where we're at, where do we go? And that.
So we're right now over capacity?
He doesn't want us there anymore.
It's not, it's, he doesn't want us, they want to put those buildings back into the intended use, which was for housing.
The other, the thing that I want to bring up is because I, I understand that we just heard this really scary, daunting budget proposal because Jeremy refuses to put it in a, in a light and, and fun way. But when we look at the millions of dollars that we're about to ask the taxpayers for, like $12,000 is a drop in the bucket. And I don't mean to take any amount of money we're asking for lightly because I don't. But as somebody who works in a school, in a program like APC, what I'll say is that, um, you know, this is a, I would believe pretty strongly in how important it is. And I, and I don't think anybody on the board disagrees with that. But the idea that we can increase capacity over the next couple of years in a program like that, I think is, is pretty important. Because what we're seeing in the trends of truancy and dropout prevention is that more and more kids are struggling to come into school and to be engaged in standard academics. And so we need to have, you know, these different options. So my question for Danielle would be, so you're at 40 now, and so you're kind of at capacity where you are in this new space. You know, do you think you can serve many more students? And then the other thing that I think is something I don't want the committee to lose sight of is, um, as somebody that's in, you know, a neighboring district, there are no options for us to send students to, to tuition out that's like APC. And we, and, and at Massabesic, we've sent kids to APC and it's great. And it always works and we're willing to pay. And it's not the $40,000 tuition that sending a kid to Sweet Service Berwick is, so it's the best option. So I think that if we had more space in a place like APC, we would, we'd be able to tuition more kids in, which would then make it a revenue generating program rather than. So I just, I understand that when we're talking about a big ask, you know, from the taxpayers, that then a bigger ask for APC is like, ooh, but $12,000 isn't, it's a drop in the bucket. And we could actually be making money off of this program that serves students well. So I just want to add that perspective. So like, how many more students could you have?
You want to come up, Danielle?
We're putting you on the spot. This is what you get paid for, Danielle. Come on down. This is why you put your, your nice clothes back on. You got to run down like the Price is Right.
Hold on, Doug has got to get the mic going for you. Thank you, Danielle.
All right. Can you hear me? Is this good?
Yep.
So it's twofold. I think that we are at capacity because of the amount of teachers we have and the space that we have. And our program is built on a community. So if we keep adding more students, then we get bigger and then we're not able to have that kind of homey type community that we have. So I think we're, there'd have to be some type of limit. And then I have most, most of my classes are 10 or 11 kids, which is a great, a good size. And sometimes still, for some kids is still anxiety provoking. So I think we have to kind of keep those kids in, like I, I know that Ivan talks to me and I know Jeremy has about like other students coming in from there. So I have like, I say 40, but I have a place holding for one of those students potentially. So, um, and when I say 40 students, they're not all coming every day. I have some that do COT for half a day. I do in the afternoon or in the morning. I have some that only need one class to graduate. So there's an influx. It's not always 40 kids in the building at one time. Does that make sense?
Marie and then Michelle.
Michelle, go ahead.
I'm just curious. We've been talking about this 12,000 additional and then also utilities. So right now in the space we're at, are utilities included in that rent right now? Like are we?
Yes.
Okay. So we're all in right now. So now we're talking about 12,000 plus additional costs. Okay. Thank you.
Marie in the chat.
So the question was asked before, is, is this a need or like a nice to want, like whatever? Having been in education for 35 years, it, it's a need. It just provides kids a different setting, a different style. It's kind of if you look at sometimes trying to fit a round peg in a square hole or square peg in a round hole. This just provides an opportunity for kids with a, with a whole different feel and look, as Danielle was alluding to. And they do things, a, a number of different things in a number of different ways that a traditional class, you know, school and classroom doesn't do. And there's a lot of time often spent on, you know, a few kids and getting them back in and, you know, getting them across that finish line. And I think programs like this can help those kids get across that finish line to that desired goal of, you know, um, an education to take them, you know, beyond their, their school years. So for me, in everything I've ever watched, seen, witnessed, for me, it's a need.
Can I just say one thing to add to that? And I, Jeremy's right. It's a need, right? On, on the aspects of Guy kind of wants us out. But I think it's a need for these kids that feel like they're misfits already to then see the space that we've created as a community for them to feel like they are wanted in this community. They are part of this community. That's a huge thing for them. They already feel sometimes that they're pushed out and that they're not thought of. And then if creating this program for them and then into this building is a need because then they will feel that they are wanted.
Well said. Chad.
So I, I may have misunderstood and I just want clarification. So the space is currently occupied and the lease ends, it sounds like 30th of June, 2025. And, and he is saying that you can not only use that space, but also the room above it or below it, doesn't really matter. But there's additional space that he's willing to provide us? Is that what's going on there?
No, there are two different buildings. There's the rectory buildings where we're at now. Okay. And Guy has always renewed the lease.
I don't know who Guy is. So, sorry.
Bitterford Housing.
Okay.
Bitterford Housing has always, we've been there, what, Martha, what, seven or eight years? Eight years in our current location. The goal was always for us to try to find something else at some point. We have looked at, um, at one point we had looked at the, the DHHS building by Burger King. We have looked at, at one point, we had looked at the DHHS building by Burger King. And that wasn't ready at that point in time. And then by the time that was getting ready, Guy had some, Bedford Housing had some different people who would lease there. As the My Place Teen Center project has come along, a lot happened upstairs. Apex had HUD money for a project that was able to go towards the basement renovations on this to help lower the cost for the school department because Guy's ultimate goal was to have that space back for buildings. And so if it's not here in this space, Guy has the right for it to say, hey, we've helped out the school department as long as we can. We really need to have this building back for its intended use of being housing.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. The location is great because we've seen the location work. We're talking $12,000 plus utilities, probably under $20,000 for students who have worked, best graduation, well, adult education's pretty good. But to see how far these kids have come and belong and have a space that's as respectable as any other building that we have in our community for $12,000 and to know that additionally, those kids are going to have the ability after the school day to walk upstairs and be part of My Place Teen Center. And then hopefully on weekends or some of the nights, even have programming after that. I always tell the story of my first couple of years here, and John went with me. When we went to Long Creek, Tammy Florin, John, myself, Jeremy Saroyes was the principal at that time, to talk to the kids in our community who were incarcerated because we kind of thought there was something wrong in the school department, like, okay, what are we doing wrong? None of those kids blamed the school department on that trip. They all just said, we didn't have anything to do after school. And there was always someone around that had some things that we shouldn't have been doing. We've had several kids over the years from '57 that have worked out very well in that program. I've got students from Portland who would love to attend right now. $20,000 probably all in in the long run to bring three apartments back on, to have adequate space in here. I think this is a super deal for our kids, and it's handicap accessible. There are showers. There's all of those pieces. I mean, I mean, is handicap accessible?
So just go to John. Danielle, briefly, you've toured and seen the new proposed new space.
Oh, multiple times. I just saw it on Tuesday with my staff. And you guys are more than welcome. Just email me. I can bring you over anytime.
You like it? It looks...
Yeah, it's great. It was, I think Tracy Gibson, who was before, kind of worked with Guy to kind of specify the things. So each of the teachers have a room. There's, so right now, just to give you a picture, during lunch, our kids are all separated. There's like four rooms that they're in. They're in a conference room, and they're in lunch, a classroom, and a classroom. They can't, we literally have assigned seating because we just don't have enough room. So just for them, just in this space, they would all be able to sit together and have lunch together. So right now, they're like with one friend. I know that might not seem huge, right? Like, but them to all just sit in one room, like a regular kind of high school, to all be able to chat and kind of have that seat would be just fantastic.
Well, it's a skill that you want them to practice before they return to BHS. And it's a sense of community you're trying to build. So I think that's an important thing for you to have just highlighted. Yeah.
Well said. John.
Jeremy, how much would you get for tuition if somebody tuitioned in from Portland or Massabesic?
Massabesic gets the friends and family discount?
Yeah. Not anymore.
So that's not a clear yes or no because sometimes you're looking at the individual profile and the needs of the student that would put those pieces out. Based off what I would say that could be in the queue, you'd probably be looking at upwards of $20,000 per student at a minimum.
Which is still a big cost saver to any district looking to outsource.
The reason I was asking, so if it's $20,000 for one student that you get, would pretty much cover the increases. So based on that, I'm going to make a motion that we enter into a lease or have Jeremy negotiate a lease with Guy, not to exceed five years, with a clause that we can renew.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we entered to a lease with Bedford Housing Authority with a five-year lease with a five-year renewal option. Discussion. Anything further? All right, all those in favor? And those opposed? I believe I counted correctly, five in favor and two opposed. Did I capture that correctly? Okay. Thank you, committee. Good discussion. I appreciate it. Thanks for all your work. Nice job, Danielle. Great. More decisions to make, committee. We have a couple of options before us for the school calendar. And I believe Jeremy may want to queue this up. I think there's an administrative preference for one, but it's for the committee to discuss. Jeremy, do you just want to set up this discussion for us?
Yeah, there's basically two options on the calendar as we went over last time. You have a holiday on Thursday of winter vacation. It's probably the most awkward day to have it when you look at of how the break aligns. We'd be looking at shutting down our buildings for the full 16 days, looking at ways to turn down the heat in probably all places except for the high school. And again, weather-dependent too. Like, if you're at negative 10, you're not going to shut things down. And then the, probably the biggest reason on this one is that if we were looking at the delays that we know have occurred based off weather for Bedford Primary School and moving kids for our pre-K classrooms, that would be really our targeted week to actually do moves because you'd have time to do it.
I'm going to make a motion for a version two of the school calendar.
Second.
Moved by Megan, seconded by Marie for a version two of the school calendar. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And anyone opposed? Okay, that is unanimous.
Now I need you to go talk to all the superintendents about this calendar, especially Steve Murphy.
All right, very good. Thank you, Megan. Item... Moving right along. Item E, second reading of overnight field trip EHS band members.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Marie. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Very good. Item F, first reading of policy to review JKB detentions of students. Need a motion on this one, correct?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, who had the motion there? Michelle? Okay, moved by Michelle, seconded by Marie. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And that is also unanimous. Anyone opposed? Okay. And all right, then we have a group. Is there objection on the committee to taking all four under item G as a group? Okay, then, so first reading of policies to revise CBI, CBIR, JKD, and JI.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Megan, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion?
Yes.
John, and then Marie.
One of them, it says, the rights addressed at either she-please, which is unreasonable. Guidelines related to health, safety, and the avoiding of potential disruptions. What does that mean? And who's enforcing that? And what does that mean? Why do we have that here?
Do you want to take that, Michelle, or anybody on the committee?
Michelle says she'll take it. Yeah, I can try. Marie, correct me if I'm missing something. But I know when we talked about it, and I think Chad sat in on that meeting too, basically, we don't want anything that has any, like, T-shirts that have alcohol or violence or anything that could be disruptive in that way. You're not allowed any of that. But there is, there's not a whole lot. I think it's just anything that's disruptive. There's no dress code as far as length of shorts or anything like that. It's more what your sayings are on your shirts, I believe, and things to that nature, right, is what we discussed.
So what's a potential disruption? Did you make a list of potential disruptions that's going to be in a handbook that you're going to get for a kid that says you can't have Colt 45 on a T-shirt?
Those are in the handbooks. That's a handbook thing. These are just broader guidelines. Handbooks.
Right, so the policy's a little more vague.
Yeah. I mean, it just, it just strikes me as odd.
Any further, Marie, or did you want to...
Can I say one more thing about that? Because I understand what you're saying. I think that what's disruptive at the intermediate school is going to be different than what's disruptive at the high school. And so we're making a policy for the district. And then they are going to make handbooks that outline specifically what works in every single one of their schools. So that's where we just, we can't get bogged down in saying, you know, it's a Playboy symbol in all schools because, or Colt 45 in all schools. Because I'm hoping, I'm hoping, Lindsay and Megan, that's not what you're dealing with.
So look, that's a vintage shirt. That's not even a shirt that a kid would have. That's vintage came from like a high-end store.
Those are making big, big comebacks. So that's why. Right, right. So anyway, that's how I would, that's why I would say it would need to be different.
John, you good with that? No, John, are you good? We're talking about all of these, right, CBIR and CBI? Just a couple of things. On CBI, number three was added where we developed a committee. So, and we're, that committee is meeting with our two collaborating contracted school districts. So number three was added. I also just want to say that there's a little bit of a discrepancy, and there needs to be a correction made. And Chad, you were there, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but in what I got in our packet, I had a September, September, October...
Which one are you on, Marie?
I'm on CBIR.
CBIR.
So if you look at A, we went from October to September. B, we went from October to September. C, we went from November to October. I had it from our meeting, that D should be from November to the second meeting in October. And that E should be not January, but it should be the first meeting in November. And the premise behind these changes was due to an election year coming up.
Eric, has this been corrected? Is it correct online?
E was corrected. I missed D, but E has been corrected already in here because I sent an email to Chris and to the committee today. But D I missed, so D should be October.
Whatever I printed yesterday, I was like, okay, this isn't, this isn't from what we did. So what it should read is September for A, first meeting for A, B, second meeting in September, C would be first meeting in October, D should be second meeting in October, E should be the first meeting in November. We do not have a second meeting. So these timelines, just for clarification, were updated because of elections. And we want this board to be able to do its work and not put this upon any new member that may, you know, come in with elections, if there were any particular board changes. And also because there is only one meeting in November. So that's why those timelines changed, and that's why the change on CBI and the correction is correct on CBI on performance objectives for November. So just wanted to clarify that.
So just to speak to what Marie said, just to clarify, so E has been fixed because this afternoon I emailed, but I missed D, so...
D should be October.
It should be October, and we can definitely make that note.
Was that an amendment?
That's what I was going to do.
John, take us away.
All right, John, go ahead.
So D, so D, I'd like to make an amendment to it to read, second meeting in October.
So moved.
All right, so you seconded, that's moved by John and seconded by Michelle on policy...
Marie.
Seconded by Marie on policy CBIR under item D. And now I'm referencing what's online. If you printed it out previously, you might have an older version. But what's online where it says November, it should be October.
Second meeting in October.
Second meeting in October. Okay, so that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, voting now on the amendment. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, so the amendment passes back to the original motion as amended, which would encompass all four of these policies together. Any further discussion, thoughts? Okay, all those in favor and anyone opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Good work, committee. Great work leading that policy committee. Thank you, Chad, for sitting in on those. I have a sense that that's been really good work done, and I'm very appreciative. I know we all are. That takes us to item K, public participation. Anybody out there want to join in on the fun? Scott, you're more than welcome. Okay, communications from the committee. Anybody have any updates or thoughts? Want to set up a carpool to the game on Saturday or anything like that? That's good.
I don't know, but they're a lot of fun to watch.
Oh, my gosh.
So I hope everybody, you know, if you can get there, get there.
Buy tickets.
As JR said, it was, they've just played fabulous. Really, really proud of them.
Hundred percent.
Is there a rally or anything planned for either the band or the basketball team?
They typically do something during lunchtime for the state championships. The kids stay for lunchtime. Dennis plans something. I believe that Mike was, they had something going on on Saturday, like some performances or some auditions for band kids. But I believe he's been able to figure out so that the band can come to the game, certain, you know, a certain group.
Oh, that's awesome. Love that.
Fifty-three, fifty-three members of the band are going to the game?
So that's a few we got to get to.
That's a couple buses. I love it.
Mike starts with one or two, and then it gets there. You know, you just, you have trust, you have trust in Mike. I still wish it was kind of at the expo. I like that environment a little bit better.
It's Marie.
And to the public, bring your orange bandanas again. That was a lot of fun.
Great, okay. Anything further from the committee? Okay, anybody feeling a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Good work, committee. Thank you.